Mr. Ringo, would you lead us, please?
Yes, sir. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for what you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Motion for consensus.
Welcome to our meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our duties. We do want to hear from our citizens. Summer break. There is time on the public comment for our two action items. On the agenda, we ask speakers to identify themselves in their district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable and succinct. If you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school minister at the meeting's adjournment. Thanks. Coming out. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? So, a motion, Mr. Rubin, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, aye? Aye, please no. It's ordered.
I have three donations. The first one is from Superior Paying. They donated two gift cards, one hundred dollar gift card and the other is a fifty dollar gift card for the senior trip. Doug Schiffman donated a hundred and twenty dollars for the CNA program. And TC Rovi Construction donated two hundred and fifty dollars towards the senior trip.
Concerning the adoption of the minutes, is there a motion to adopt minutes from the May eighth meeting? We have a motion from Ms. Meyer. We have a second. We have a second, Mr. Rubin. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, please no. It's ordered. It's reported to the superintendent.
Thank you, sir. All right, the first item we have for you...
Reports to superintendent, Dr. Grimsley. I forgot to add that part. Now you may proceed.
Joshian, it's okay, we're all family. All right, the first item I have for you was your homework from last month. So, the V S B A has put out their recent spring round of policy updates for your review and ultimately your adoption later as an action item. So, I don't know if you had a chance to review those or if you have any questions. A lot of the changes were just simple language verbiage or legal references and that kind of things, but nothing major from previous policy. There was some about one of the crisis management pieces about panic lines that was removed or something like that, but other than that, that was the only major.
I have a question about, it was I K F D?
Yes.
And it was about, we opt, it said on the next that you gave me, we opt out of having alternative paths for credits, like for, it's about being outcome based rather than a hundred and forty hour for some classes. I was curious, just like that that's a thing that we could do and why do we choose not to do it? Why have we chosen to pass on to do it? And why don't we think about that when we get applied? Apply to some of the courses if you want to offer, or say high school thinking or independent study for things like that.
It's a great question. The hundred and forty hour clock waiver for certain alternative routes to credit, we're not quite at a point where we have things in place to be able to do that just yet, but it's up there for review. We can adopt it at any time. We do have flexible scheduling because we don't quite do a hundred and forty hours straight anyway. So, making it apply to us is kind of a, it's just a little strange. So, I know the high school and Michelle Papa, the guidance director, are working out a way that we can be sure we need it. We already have local alternative routes to getting, like say if you pass certain alternative assessments, you can still get credit for different things. So, we already have that. So, it seemed like a separate procedure for somebody who may want to come in and say, I have mastery of the content, so I'd like a waiver and they have to have a process for that, but...
Yeah, it's interesting to think of, I could imagine you doing, or if you're interested in offering something that would be alternative.
Yeah, so you can opt to do the, and that's really just giving you the waiver of the hundred and forty clock hours. And we, right now, because of the new profile of graduate, we already have the mandate that we have to allow alternate routes to get credit. So, we have that in place. This is a very specific tie to just clock hours of instruction. So, we're still trying to sort out in our schedule how that's going to work with that policy. Because it is optional, I think a lot of schools in my instructional group too are struggling with how to adopt that and make it work well with the other mandates that are already in place. So, it'll probably come back up as we get more guidance from DOE, as this is implementation year, a lot of the changes. But it's, we wanted it for your review to see that because that is the whole essence of what we're shifting to.
Yeah, that makes sense, just knowing you've been...
Absolutely, we want to, yes.
Any other questions? And we'll vote on that tonight.
And that optional policy isn't there for vote just yet. As it's ready, we'll bring up the revisions locally, how it would work, and then you'd have thirty days to review and then... All right, federal program applications, it's that time of year where we submit all of our federal applications to DOE and Ms. Karen Johnson, Assistant Superintendent, is going to give us that presentation. Been working really, really hard on these screens the last couple of weeks, though.
All righty, it's my pleasure to give you a quick overview this evening of our federal and state program grants. These fall under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, or they are title programs. So, these include, if we want to go ahead to the next slide, Title One, which is improving basic programs, which serves many of our disadvantaged students who need remedial assistance. Title Two, which supplies funding for teacher and principal training. Title Three, which supports English language learners. And Title Four, which is the newest grant to come back in, Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant. So, for Title One, Improving Basic Programs, we received one hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and sixteen cents to use in this current grant, or that's the projected amount. That is down quite a bit from one hundred and seventy four thousand four hundred dollars. So, this is the same amount that we received last year. So, we're going to be continuing to try to do much with less money, which is a pretty common theme when we talk about our title grants. The funds will be used to support one hundred and sixteen identified students who receive services in reading, math, or both. These funds will pay for a hundred percent of our reading, math intervention salary for the next school year. We will pay a portion of the salary for seven pair professionals, and the amount that we pay for those pair of professionals will depend on the amount of time that they are serving Title One students. So, the amounts can range from twenty percent of their scheduled day up to seventy five percent of their scheduled day. Also covered will be their related benefits, online intervention programs, materials and supplies if there are any funds left. And then, a new caveat to consider is homeless students. And we were reminded recently that the Title One funds are intended to serve our homeless student population. And for several years, when we do our reporting for our attendance purposes to the Virginia Department of Education, we didn't have any identified homeless students. Last year, we had one identified homeless student. That would be for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. And then, for the sixteen, seventeen school year, we had four identified students. So, that would be any student who during the course of the school year is coming into the county, maybe doubled up with relatives. So, they are counted as homeless in that situation. And our obligation, well, there are many obligations for those students. We definitely want to make sure that they have a level playing field when they come into the school division. So, we want to be sure that their basic needs are taken care of. Usually, we have other assistance programs that can help take care of those basic needs, school supply needs. We have the free and reduced lunch program that will help them out. Our biggest need for these students has been in the area of transportation because when a student who is homeless comes to a new school, they are entitled to remain in their school of origin. So, the situation that we sometimes have is a child may move into Rappahanna County from Fallkeer County, and the parent would like for them to continue to attend school in Fallkeer County at their school of origin. So, it's up to us and that school division to figure out a way to make the transportation work. So, we were required this past school year to set aside some funds to be able to support that transportation piece if the students do choose to remain in their school of origin. Yes. See, I wanted you to learn something new this evening. They do have a mile range that they look at. So, I think it's usually around fifty or sixty miles. Yeah, yeah, fifty or sixty miles. So, it gets even more interesting if the child is a special education student because then, you know, especially if they are receiving supports through the community service board, they can be residing in another county but required to be funded through the Rappahanna Community Services Board. So, lots of caveats there. So, moving on to Title Two, which is a little less convoluted, we had twenty five thousand eight hundred and sixty two dollars this year, and that is also down approximately ten thousand dollars from the two thousand fifteen, sixteen amount. Funds will continue to be used for tuition, assistance for our staff members, teacher recruitment expenses, conference and trainings, and of course, our L F C C Education Consortium in which we have a partnership with our local private schools. Title Three, Language Acquisition. Actually, this amount is up a tiny bit this year. We went from around eight hundred dollars and we're up to two thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars ninety two cents. And that's based on the fact that we have had more L students enrolled in our school division over the course of the past school year. So, we currently have around nineteen identified students, and I say around nineteen because at any point in the school year, for instance, in the spring, we had two new students who moved in, but recently learned two of our other students. So, they do tend to migrate quite frequently. So, that number is changing constantly. However, we have held pretty steady with nineteen as the base number this year, which has resulted in additional funding. We use these funds to purchase intervention materials and supplies. We also have a teacher who is endorsed and serving as an English language learner teacher. And she had requested that we set aside some funds this year for some meet and greet events so that we could have separate activities for the families of these English language learner students, aside from our traditional parent-teacher conference nights, so that we could focus more specifically on information that they needed.
How many families do you have?
English language learners? If we have nineteen students and several of them have multiple children, so I'd say maybe eleven, twelve families. And then, we're also going to look at some support for after-school tutoring. We have some students that we want to be sure are on track for graduation, so we wanted to put a small amount for that in there. And moving right along to the final title grant, my favorite, Title Four, Academic Enrichment. And you may remember, I shared this one with you in October of last school year. We just got the funds released again for Title Four grant last October. So, this grant is basically going to keep in place the services that we started then. We do have counseling services available for students who are kind of in hitting a rough patch and may need immediate access to counseling. I think we had six or seven students who took advantage of that since we got the funds in October. We're continuing to look at restorative practices. We had, I think, twelve teachers who went through mindfulness training last year, which helps our students to be able to stop, reflect, find ways to calm themselves when they're getting agitated. We're also looking at positive behavioral interventions. The principal of the elementary school has a great plan to start off next school year to help our staff to focus on teaching our students positive behaviors and modeling those so that every student understands what the behavior expectations are. And then, social skills instruction.
Is there a, has a family or parent component to that type of education?
The family and the parent component comes in with the counseling services, with parent and family permission is required. No, I think that that, I understand where you're going with that, and I think that's an excellent point. We have included parents in some of the restorative practices, things that we've talked about, but I think that more education on that piece would be helpful for the parents and the families too.
Is that included in that title?
Yes, that can be, that can be included with the funds from Title Four also. So, each of these grants actually has the parent component to it, other than Title Two, professional development. So, tying it all together, the Every Student Succeeds Act is what this is called now, was upgraded in two thousand fifteen, sounds so much better than the No Child Left Behind Act, has much more positive spin on it. With remedial support from our Title One tiered interventions, plus our teacher and administrative training, plus supporting our English language learners, and finally adding in attention to our school climate and our social emotional needs, we can plan for success for every student. Are there any questions? You had the full grants uploaded as separate documents, and I'm sure that you spent your whole weekend reading through those very detailed grant requests, so...
So, we've got thirty-three thousand dollars less to work with, with these four grants in the coming year.
At least.
Let me approximate that. You've got to do the same job.
Yes.
Basically, the formula was based on what? The formula is based on what?
It looks to me like it does go with the enrollment, the number of students.
Mostly A D M enrollment. There's some free and reduced lunch from Title One, that's connected to that too. So, there's formulas for each one that are a little different. And Title Two got swapped across the board when S A came into place, they took that and we authorized it somewhere else. So, Career Tech got more, got less than Title Two, so we shifted around a lot of federal funding.
But there's no, so our net, we're not getting that back somewhere else, discounting? Right.
Well, that was all in consideration as we went through our budget process. We put out there that we knew we were going to visualize. Part of that, our L C I adjustment too, will help with federal, because that's your percentage of federal dollars you'll receive from the state.
Thank you.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Okay, our next item is four point three, V S B A Showcases for Success. I don't know if you saw that...
Got this in the mail, this was so cool.
Yes, so we have some extras too, but if you don't have one...
Does everyone have one? Well, we've been... I thought you all wanted to see it.
See that. So, we wanted to brag a little bit about Commit to Be Fit because it was selected as one of the V S B A showcases for success. And in particular, it was at the Action-Based Learning Lab with the Brain Star program that Ms. Holly Jenkins, Ms. Holly Jenkins designed, actually. She is the creator of Brain Star, yes. So, she created that, and it's there, and with her public relations work and communications, got them to notice what we're doing, and that was so great. So, and you see, this is Kate Teeger right there, Jackie Teeger, little blogger. I love it, thank you. But we wanted to brag a little bit that we're published.
Yeah. You see, I opened it up not expecting that. That was a great thing.
Yes. So, we've been trying to get the word out everywhere, and we've actually even submitted proposals to speak about Commit to Be Fit and the action-based learning and what we're doing in the classrooms because it is pretty cutting edge, and not a lot of people are doing it. We've already had schools come and observe us, so...
Should we not think about doing a session at the Fall Conference?
We submitted a proposal for it, so we're waiting to hear. Yes. Yes, we're working on those quite a bit.
There are a lot less exciting things being briefed.
I've noticed, especially if you bring some of the stuff, people can play with it. So, we just wanted to take a second to brag about that a little bit. All right, four point four. It's been a while since we've talked about transportation and all the exciting things that have been going on. So, I've invited Student Support Services Director Mike Tupper and our Transportation Supervisor Al Payne to give you an update about what's going on in transportation. Changes and things for consideration, things like that. Where's yours?
Good evening, thank you, Doctor Grimsley. How's everybody? So, just want to take a few moments. First, I want to introduce, I don't know how many of you know Al, most people do. Al's, I just can't say enough good things about him. He's done a great job this year working with the drivers and helping Chris become a better mechanic. This guy knows what he's doing with our machines. And obviously, the sheriff's department uses him quite a bit also, and I think their cars are doing okay, except for a couple of... So, anyway, just want to kind of go over a few things that, that, some improvements and give you some things to consider tonight as we go forward into the next school year. One, there's been a major improvement in purchasing of supplies, things, parts, tires, fluids. Al comes to us from U P S, and so he's been out there and he knows, he knows a lot of vendors and different things. And one of the first things he did was start looking at what we're paying for things, and he found the same products, for the most part, for a whole lot less. And that's, that's been tremendous for our department. They've adjusted the maintenance requirements. As you all know, buses have to go through a forty-five day inspection. Chris and Al moved that up. They give themselves a ten-day window and they inspect every bus, every vehicle that transports students every thirty-five days. And that ten-day window gives them the opportunity, if there's something really wrong, they can get that bus corrected before it's back out on the road with our students. Won't go into what was done before because that really doesn't matter, it's what's been happening now that's made the improvements. Pre-trip booklet was one of the things that they added. It's a better accountability now with, you know, bus drivers have a booklet, and they're, you know, pre-trip's very important. Things go wrong, they hand that to the mechanic, mechanic reviews that, checks whatever the issue is, and then reports back to the driver. And that's, that record is maintained in the office, in Al's office. Routes have always, we're constantly looking at routes, trying to improve efficiency there. In fact, we'll spend some time this summer looking at several routes. We're focusing on a couple of areas. One, Woodville area, we actually have a turnaround we want to go check out because it's a little problematic for one of our buses to turn around. It's very narrow, and so we've got to look at a change there. We're looking at other routes to see if we can maybe add two certain routes to make them more efficient and level out the bus loads a little bit. So, that's a constant practice, looking for safety, making sure we're always, kids are always exiting the bus on the proper side of the road. Big thing that we're going to start next school year is going to be a big change, well, it's going to be a big change for us, it's not how we pick up students in the afternoon. If you all remember, in the mornings, all of our buses is lined up here at the high school when we drop off. That's going to remain the same in the mornings. The afternoon's going to be the big change. All the buses will be going down to the elementary school in the afternoon, and we've already practiced it one time, the buses will be in parallel, there's plenty of room for grass side parking, curb side parking. Obviously, there'll be no traffic going into that lane during that time of the day. The elementary principal, Mr. Temple, has designed a program to make sure the dismissal of students goes properly. And when parents are picking up their children in cars, he's got a process all designed for that. We're excited about that because one thing that's going to do for our high school is it's going to give us about fifteen minutes, which Carol and I have already come up with an idea what we want to do with those fifteen minutes, but, but it's, it makes a big difference. And all the buses will be on the road headed to the routes at the same time. If you ever watched the afternoon runs, the first load that loads here at the high school goes to the elementary school, elementary school, of course, loads comes up here, and that load, that last load loading at the elementary school takes forever. And those buses are, those buses are a little bit later getting home. So, we're excited about that. There'll probably be some tweaking of it, but it's going to, you know, it's going to be different, it's going to be a change, but safety's always the first concern. We're going to make sure there's plenty of supervision, and obviously, law enforcement is behind it, they're aware of it, and they'll be there to help support it. Some of the, one of the things that we decided to do this year was do an end-of-month breakfast to improve morale of the drivers. So, every month, we decided we'd figure out what we wanted to do, and we did a variety of things. I have to say, the best, the best morning breakfast was Al's sausage gravy, outstanding. He can, he's an expert at that. Certainly learned well from your mom, right? It was delicious. Field trip and athletic trip scheduling, much improvement there. Again, Al's a great mechanic, but he spends a lot of time juggling these buses and these drivers. You know, we're not overflowing with drivers, and things are leaving early, different trips going, you know, we're always on the road. And he spends a great deal of time scheduling those trips and making sure we have drivers. We've made some improvements there, and we've got some things we want to try next year in terms of just making sure, because we don't, you know, we, if the trip is designed to support student curriculum, we don't want them to miss it. We want them to be able to take that opportunity, so we're, Al works really hard to make sure that happens. We had professional development again, this pre-trip idea, you've heard it quite a bit. One of the most important things the drivers do every morning, and we had a state police person come in, and state policeman, actually, and he is one of these transportation guys, and he does that, that's what he does. He pulls trucks over and makes sure that they're, they're proper for the road. So, he's got a big job. So, he, he gave our drivers a little lesson on, you know, what they look for and why it's important, and how much trouble you can get in if you don't do it right. So, that was, all our drivers were there for that. And we're going to do some more professional development on that, and we're going to break up in the teens at the beginning of the school year and review that process because that process can be quite time-consuming. And again, every driver has to do it, and they're... Certainly learned well from your mom, right? It was delicious. Field trip and athletic trip scheduling, much improvement there. Again, Al's a great mechanic, but he spends a lot of time juggling these buses and these drivers. You know, we're not overflowing with drivers and things are leaving early, different trips going, you know, we're always on the road. And he spends a great deal of time scheduling those trips and making sure we have drivers. We've made some improvements there and we've got some things we want to try next year in terms of just making sure, because we don't, you know, we, if the trip is, is designed to support student curriculum, we don't want them to miss it. We want them to be able to take that opportunity, so Al works really hard to make sure that happens. We had professional development again, this pre-trip idea, you've heard it quite a bit. One of the most important things the drivers do every morning. And we had a state police person come in, and state policeman, actually, and he is one of these transportation guys and he does that, that's what he does. He pulls trucks over and makes sure that they're, they're proper for the road. So, he's got a big job. So, he, he gave our drivers a little lesson on, you know, what they look for and why it's important and how much trouble you can get in if you don't do it right. So, that was, all our drivers were there for that. And we're going to do some more professional development on that and we're going to break up in the teens at the beginning of the school year and review that process, because that process can be quite time-consuming. And again, every driver has to do it and there are more efficient ways to do that as well. And Al, Al helps with that. So, we're going to, you know, break our trainers down. Al and Chris will be trainers, so we'll have four trainers. Break those groups and then each, what I want to see is every driver, I want them to actually go through the process, the same process they go through when they get their endorsement to drive, they get a CDL. I don't think you can do it enough. And thanks to you all, we're very excited. We got two 77-passenger buses coming on. And here's the big thing, you approved the fact that getting AC in these buses was important and we've got two buses with AC. That's a start and of course, over a period of time, if we continue this process, we will have a whole fleet of buses that are air-conditioned. And the fact that we start earlier, they'll be, they'll be used quite a bit and, you know, we're just accustomed to that now. Some of these trips, these long trips, students go on, you know, they, they're used to air. So, we're looking forward to those buses coming in. They'll be in the middle of July. I didn't hear that.
Are they seatbelted?
No. So, again, our, our idea eventually is to have all AC on those buses. And the company that we're working with is outstanding. They do free training. They come in, in fact, they were in the other day and they went over the wiring harness, just some upgrades on that and showed our mechanics, you know, the new wiring harnesses and how, you know, how, what the fixes are for those. That's a great question. You know, we've, obviously, we have, we've got-
I'm going to leave it up to you.
Al has a great plan. He mentioned to me today, it's basically, we have, and you correct me if I'm wrong now, there's, Bus 23 is one of our bigger buses, goes the Agnes Road. It's, it's still a good bus, but it's, it has some, you know, occasionally, it just, it's old and it's getting worn out. We, we had one manual transmission bus out on the road that we're going to pull off and put a spare that we've had, Bus 14, and put that on that route. So, Bus 23, we know one of the 77-patents will use for a spare initially, but when you say spare, it's probably going to go on a lot of athletic trips, different things, field trips and things at first. If Bus 23 doesn't hold up, that's probably where one of them is going to go. It's nice to have that option. Of course, you know, we're going to hear it, because every driver's going to want that one, but it's-
I'm going to bring all the drivers here for me. I tell Dicky, I-
I think the longest route are the most senior.
That's exactly what I've known.
That's, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. Like I said, Al's got a great plan. I mean, I think it's well-thought-out. And again, I can't say enough, I feel like the relationship with the Sheriff's Department has been a good one. I've seen Chris in the shop. I mean, they, some of the cars, sometimes we can't fix them. It's a, I don't know why do we don't, I don't know why we can't go from Dodge to Chevrolet or maybe even Ford. I don't know. But anyway, I think, I see those cars coming in and going out, tire changes and different things. Chris is an outstanding mechanic, jumps on, and he's young and he gets right on it and those cars are back out on the road for the Sheriff's Department to be able to keep us safe. So, I'm real proud of that relationship. Other than Chris's car, yeah. So, a couple of things I want you all to kind of consider, I kind of want to put out in the open right now, because I think we're going to have to talk about it later and obviously, you guys can bring it up at other meetings. As you know, last year, or year before last, we, we have certain drivers that meet the criteria that, that was created for them to take a car home rather than their bus. And we, so at this point, we have seven cars going with drivers in the morning when they come in, they leave their bus here and they go on home, and then their bus stays at home with them. Those seven cars are all hand-me-downs. Two of the seven still are capable of transporting students. And you heard Assistant Superintendent Ms. Johnson say, you know, on some occasions, we need to transport students. We, the year goes, it's weird, you know, sometimes you don't need anything, all of a sudden, you need five different cars and you need five people to drive them, so you just never know. So, two of those seven cars, we feel like are still capable of transporting students. But the big point is, these cars, when they're in mint condition, are only worth about 500 So, what I think the board and all of us need to consider is how much more money do we want to continue to put into these vehicles before we say, you know, enough's enough, they gotta go? So, one of the things that I've done, and it's, again, it's just a proposal, an idea, I'm going to get Al to hand you, is it just a, we've come up with a voucher system, a gas voucher system for our drivers. And I mentioned this to the drivers toward the end of the year, got mixed responses, but when you, when you open these things up to your people that do, that are in the trenches, they come up, they give you information that's really important. One is, when you think about a driver that's driving a bus for us every day, they actually come to work twice during the day, not just once like most of us.
Like, how long does it take them?
That's, that's right. So, they're, so they're, so they're, yeah, so there's, it's four times. So, this voucher, this formula, and Ms. Myers, if you look, hopefully, my math is correct, but the idea is that I calculated an average mileage, I took all the drivers, because I want to be equitable here, and I averaged out, most drivers drive about 24 miles a day. So, essentially, this voucher would pay for one of those trips, where you and I come to work once, they're coming twice, so we, essentially, this voucher would cover one of their trips to work, is kind of how I'm looking at it. And so, when you look at that, that system there that I've come up with, basically, it's the amount of gas we would need to provide to our drivers to compensate for that trip. So, there would, it would be, it would be a voucher, they would come, bring that to Al, okay, my voucher for this month is this amount of gas, and they pump that into their, their personal vehicle. And we maintain control over that. So, it's just an idea to consider and, and again, what that would mean is that the buses would remain at all times in the bus lot, and I'm going to give you, tell you some advantages to that in a second. And, you know, you don't, you don't have seven cars to have to maintain and that aren't, are approaching the end of their life. I mean, I'm sure Al and Chris can keep putting major parts on them and keep them on the road, but it's, it gets us out of hand after a while. But you don't have to, also, you don't have to carry them on the insurance. So, to me, the savings is pretty much going to be a wash if you, if you do a voucher like that. But again, that's just a consideration, something that I want you all to start thinking about, because I think the day is coming where we're going to have to start taking cars away and then how it's, becomes an equity issue then. And I know- So, something, something for you all to consider and you may have a better idea. And the last thing I want to talk about with you, and I think, Mr. Grove, you're going to be excited about this, because I remember school boards in the past, we've all, and we've all kind of thought the same thing, that we see these smaller buses going down the road and we're wondering, you know, why, you know, what, you know, what do you have to have to drive those? So, DOE set out a clarification on multi-function school activity buses. And so, I've got a nice little picture of one. Now, if you can just take and let the board look at that. These vehicles are designed to carry up from 11 to 15 passengers. At the 16 patch, after, when you get to 16 passengers, you've got to have a CDL. We have our vans, we know we can, you know, we can, we can take, what, seven, seven, that includes the driver. So, that's why we don't have, we don't have to have any special thing on our license. These vehicles, whoever drives them, they're considered a bus driver, but the difference is, they don't have to take the CDL license. I can go, Al can take me now to DMV, I can take the test for my, for school, school bus, school bus endorsement, pass a test, and I've got it on my, my license. But before I could drive that vehicle for this school, our trainers have to train us and put us through the same training as our drivers go. The only difference is, they don't have to take the CDL. So, they're trained on, you know, stopping at railroad tracks, you've got to let people, pre-trips, all that, they do all the same things, they just don't have to pass that major CDL test, which is a home ding, from what I understand. So, we've looked at these vehicles, we find this Chevrolet duly vehicle is probably the best, we've priced them a little bit, they're, they're rather expensive, but they, they're pretty hot commodities. A lot of people are getting them now. The, you know, the advantage to having a vehicle like that is, look, many of our people that have smaller teams, for example, could get this endorsement. We have the training staff to train them. They would have to train and transport, when they practice, they would have to transport kids in these buses, they have to drive, they wouldn't be able to get into a regular bus. So, you know, as we're thinking going forward, I see a lot of advantages to having a, you know, obviously, we can't buy a bunch of them, but if one day we can get one and maybe two, because I'm thinking about Head Start groups, 3K groups, as far as athletic teams, your smaller teams, when they go to, you know, teams of 10, teams of 12.
It's academic.
Yes. You got, you got, you don't have to get a great big school bus down the road, you just, and you, and you can, and we can probably train a lot of our staff members to get this S endorsement. And obviously, I would say that if, if, if I got the S endorsement and I drove for, you know, Al called me and said, can you drive and take this team, so on, obviously, we'd compensate them for that, but I think it's a lot easier for people to do.
I mean, even, even for Head Start, it makes it nice, because those kids don't have to ride with your house owners or nothing, separate them, which is probably a good thing. I mean, you've got a kid that's three, four years old, you want to put him on separate bus, but now, we got to put them all on the same bus and probably isn't the greatest thing in the world. So, that and these buses, steps and stuff, they sit a lot lower, like mini-bikes, so make it easier on those kids too.
And the cost is half the cost of a big bus?
Probably about 50s, in the 50s.
They take, they take some usals, but by the time they come in and the guy talks to you, say, hey, by the time they hit the lot, they're gone.
Wakefield has two or three of these activities, have you looked at those?
I haven't, we haven't gone over there, look at Wakefields.
Yeah, look at, I mean, they got two, three new ones, I think. And I think they would serve the purpose that you're talking about, this 15-passenger vehicle. I don't know what they cost. They're light.
Yeah.
But you might want to take a ride up there.
Sure, yeah. I mean, even for a while, even, to me, the advantage, it's a smaller vehicle, even if we had to get a bus driver to drive it, it's still better than putting our bigger buses.
You're saving a lot of money. Fuel and everything else.
That's right, that's right. So, that's, that's kind of, in a nutshell, this year, and again, I'm really excited to be working with Al and I just, I, you know, I realize, being at the school board office, I'll tell you another funny in a minute, but it's, you know, I remember Al when he was in high school here and, man, he's a good mechanic.
You're starting to say.
We, we, he's, he's, boy, he knows his stuff and I've learned a great deal this year. Me and Chris, of course, we all know Chris, Chris, same way, I think he's done an outstanding job and they take their job seriously.
Tell me how this voucher system would work.
Um-
Would you, we would provide gasoline to drivers' private cars, is that how we do it?
That's correct.
Through, through some kind of a card or number, similar to what the deputy do?
Right.
Correct. Once they, once they put the fuel in and I put the, I would be in charge of it, basically me or Chris one, I might dare Chris to take care of it. Once they put the code in, that code will be gone, like no one else can even use that code. It would just wipe itself off. So, like, let's just say it's 1301 for Mike, good example, he goes and puts fuel in, once I put the code in, he's done. Like, I couldn't even go back myself and put 1301 in when he's going to get fuel.
Okay, but 1301 would be 10 gallons of fuel or, or you take that determination?
We think we-
That's probably going to have to be my determination as far as how many gallons, I mean, once they put a set gallon on it, it'd have to be me that controls it, because I don't think we can set them pumps to pump 10, 15, 20. And we'd have to, somebody would have to supervise it 100% to get the amount that they would get.
Don't we just give them a straight?
Well, and that's, that was one of the other things we looked at early, you know, you calculate that's-
Yeah, a whole lot easier.
Yeah, well, I don't disagree with that. I'm, I, I think that, my rationale was that we, not necessarily in every case, because I don't, I don't have the data in front of me, but I would say that we have fuel left over each year, so it would be a cost-neutral item. But I, I'm, I'm all for some kind of-
I mean, you would think that if, if every driver got 40 gallons of gas a year, that's 40 times 3, that's $120 or something. You know, just give them, swipe them for 120 bucks. Wouldn't that be easier?
Would that be for every driver or just for drivers?
Sure.
It's for consideration and discussion.
Right.
Yeah, it's for consideration and discussion. You want it to be-
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So, the idea is to give the driver something back, kind of lessen the aggravation and the hassle they deal with?
Well, uh-
Are we going to put, get the pumps corrected so they can pump this gas at, you know, say noon or 4 o'clock in the afternoon?
You're talking about that airlock?
Yeah.
Well, you know what, one of your, one of your colleagues gave us the trick to make sure that doesn't happen.
If it's the old man and the unmarked cars, it doesn't work.
Well, you know what-
The only thing to fix that problem is to put the pump inside the tank.
Can we do that when we do that?
We'll look into it.
Yes, that's what I've been told by the guys that come out there and look at it, they said, do the pumps up off ground, it gets hot in the summertime and to try to pump the fuel from the tank.
Is the pump-
No, it's commercial.
Is it inside the actual housing?
Yeah, it's sitting outside, basically, behind the casing.
Can we not put something in there with it?
Well, they said you can, you can put bags of ice, like your old-school gas station stuff, they'll put bags of ice and stuff on it, but man, I don't, you know, the next thing I know, y'all got whole problems and y'all out there trying to suck it with the board and throw ice and stuff on it.
Water's in it.
I mean, I'm just saying that, that's up to y'all. I mean, we can put skids of ice out there, but-
Well, and-
How long's that going to last, 12 to 14?
Long-term, anyway.
But that is the fix, from what I've been told, is to put the pump, the pump really belongs in the tank where it's cool, down in the ground?
I know it's off-topic, but it just-
I know.
You're, you're trying to get them a break?
Code wears me out 24/7 with that.
Yeah, I saw a lockup on somebody the other day too, and actually, the, the idea worked for me when I cut it off and I-
Cut it back on?
Cut it, I, I, you know, I ran, got the air out of, or the rest of the residue out of the line and then turned it back on and it was fine. But maybe I was lucky.
I tried, it wasn't pumped for me, Mark did it, he got about four tenths out of one and one tenth out of the other.
If we, get y'all to get fuel around 3:00 in the morning, it'd be great.
We did, I work nights, so my guys are filling up at, you know, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. But if you go on the transport, because we've got a lot of individuals that, that need to the hospital lately, and you go down at 6:00 AM, you come back at 2:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon, you can't get nothing until the next day. And some of the guys are coming back, getting 18 gallons at a time, and you're on fumes because you can't make the pump. So, I know it's off-topic, but it is a part of the-
Well, yeah, something you can look into.
How many gallons?
Yeah, I didn't realize that was that ma, big of, I knew it was a problem, but I didn't, I didn't realize it was that bad.
It can be.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll work on it.
Stick a hose out there next to it, I don't get this large, it's spread.
We'll go back to the old style, the crank.
Y'all want to swipe it, we put it on.
We'll go to the old-style crank.
Or spray it with a garden hose going along.
Can't we just put the pump in the ground and fix it?
Don't we have anything in your mind?
Why don't we get a price and see what that's going to be?
We will work on that. Yes, sir.
Sounds good to me. It's kind of silly.
Yes.
But the other problem too, while you're getting that fixed, is if, if we lose power, then we don't have pumps either.
Well, that's what we have on the farm, Mr.-
Well, I do, I have that, but they don't, but the point is, you have to have a separate deal.
So we'll be.
But the point is, we need a backup system for when we don't have power, that's for sure.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
When you don't have power, you don't have fuel.
That's right, no water, yeah.
Which is bad.
I, I bet the county would chip in on that, especially when the deputies don't have.
Bring that up in our crisis management team meetings.
Good discussion.
We'll bring that up.
That was the fix.
Yeah. So any other questions, I appreciate your time tonight, and.
So, yeah, I have.
Yes, sir.
Is the rest area squared away yet?
I told you. So, we're, we're excited about that, and I know, I'll be the first to say, I was so gung ho, I wanted that thing to happen the first week of school, and it just.
I don't explain what it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, it, we got a, we have a, we're creating a, a rest area for our drivers, when they come in a little early, they can, so the shed there, we're creating a space for them, and, anyway, long and short of it was, what I wanted to do, I can't do by code, so we had to change what, what it is and how, what we're making. So Scott Schloss has been working with me, and he has a class, and we wanted to tie this with students, give them an opportunity, and it, just time got away from us, and he, you know, he doesn't have certain kids all year long, but we did have a class this year that did a tremendous amount of work throughout the campuses, you all well know. So he's, we've got just about everything ready to go, wallboard's gotta go in, Scott's class has put the door and the window, and I even talked to Mr. Schlosser about, because we want it, we, our computers can access the wifi at that distance, what we have in place. So I talked to Mr. Schlosser, and I'm glad he's here tonight, about doing a solar panel, this would be a great experience for the kid, kids on that building, that would create enough, generate enough power to charge a battery that would run computers in that room. And also, we talked about, we hadn't talked to Mr. Schlosser about this, Al had talked about the opportunity to maybe put a skylight in there, just for the experience of putting a skylight in the roof, which would give more light in the room, which wouldn't, would mean we wouldn't necessarily have to have lighting inside the building. So, to me, it's an opportunity for some of our students, Mr. Grove, and I'm hoping and praying it will be done early next fall, but, you know, we've got child labor laws, we gotta be careful with that, right, Mr. Schlosser? But it's an exciting project, and, and most of the drivers have been okay about it, but I know, Mr. Mills, you have a question too, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I have a question, so, back to the original topic of the vouchers, so, from the beginning of your discussion, we have seven cars, five of them are gonna cost us more than their work, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
And so basically, that's gonna be on some kind of surplus list for us, it sounds like?
Yes, sir.
And leave us with two. So one way or another, we gotta, we gotta crack this nut before the school year starts, yeah?
I, I would say that, yes.
I'm trying to get to the timeline for what it is we're trying to manage here, it sounds like we've gotta come up with something, because we're gonna be five cars short, if we're being prudent about what we're investing into old junkers, right?
Yes, sir.
Can we not just add that now, they're place paid, that's a full time driver?
Well, it was interesting to me, I thought, I mean, one thing you're trying to do is provide equity.
Oh, that's why I said.
You know, the people who drive further are getting more, the ones who live closer, is that true?
That's true, yes, sir.
That's what you're trying to do, so it's not a flat amount for every driver, it's based on how much miles would be our deadhead miles, right? You're trying to compensate them for what we would have been paying for them to drive a deadhead bus.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So it's not, stipend would be a level, everybody gets the same amount type of compensation?
Why not, or? Give them all twenty-four gallons, twenty-four miles a day, this many gallons, this many gallons a year, everybody's getting an extra three hundred, four hundred dollars, you know, throughout the year, on your check, here it is, thank you for your service, we love having you here, this is great, car's going away, because, you know, like the one guy stood up there and said, the seatbelt doesn't wanna work, the car's going away, and you're getting a raise, here's a win-win.
Right, here's, so thirty-six hundred gallons is ten K, right?
Yes.
Would be, you're gonna have to find a ten K in a budget that's already been.
Somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna talk about wear and tear on their own car, you know that's gonna happen.
Right, and we do have a driver that says, you know, I have to get a different kind of car to come to work, so.
And we probably have a driver that only has one car.
There's people that have been three hours moving away.
I know.
If you wanna work, you wanna work, if you gotta go to work, you gotta have to put more anything. You can't compensate.
You know, we have, we have a, we have a, we have a car sitting down on the lot, that has a transmission.
I've done it fourteen years, San Antonio, it's terrific, how long is that year?
There's, there's a car that, if it got a new twenty-four hundred dollar transmission, it could be back on the road, but that's, the car's not worth it, and goes to the junkyard, man pays a hundred and fifty for it, they got a twenty-four hundred dollar transmission.
All right, so we got two months to figure this out, thanks for the information.
You're welcome, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. You've got some good options, it's good talk, that's good information, thank you for coming.
We can't offer those cars to the drivers.
They can go to the option.
Only for the option, but they can't, can they, can they bid?
Are they allowed?
They're employees, they can't bid.
After a certain point in time, I thought they did, but.
I didn't think employees would.
Employees can't bid?
I don't think so.
No, I don't think they can.
Pretty sure we can.
I was told I couldn't last year, somebody bid for me, so, just saying.
All right, Al.
That's enough, Al.
He always tells us what you did.
Somebody bid me, I'd like go tomorrow, I just left.
Straight up, thanks, Al.
I love shop guys.
That's good information.
Thank you so much. All right, which brings me to my next update, which is a budget update, if you probably have seen that the General Assembly finally did come to an agreement, finally, which yielded no additional revenue for us, unfortunately, of course, but I did load the chapter one and chapter two of those amendments for you to check out. Basically, the only thing that really kind of struck us that came out of nowhere was they went with a three percent increase for teachers, and that came out of nowhere, I'll pull up the, some chapter two, because you'll notice. Here it is, okay, so funded SOQ positions, you'll go down to the changes, and each of these in the group's budget has what the Senate had proposed off of the original governor's budget, the House, and then what the final General Assembly decision was, you'll notice that each time it was two percent, two percent, two percent, so it was never on anybody's radar that it, and then General Assembly said, oh, we're gonna do three. So, that's great, we want that to happen, it's just not built into our budget, however, you have the biennium to do it, so we've done two, which means we're mandated for the one, and the FY twenty, so it's just to keep in mind, so, don't worry, we just have to be cognizant of that. Also, the enrollment loss funding that they provided in FY nineteen will go away FY twenty, so that's seventy-five thousand off the bat, you won't have, with an increase in the SOQ that you're gonna have to match, but that's future planning. But basically, the budget that you'll be acting on is the new bottom line that the supervisors gave us, and it was fully funded, even though it doesn't look that way from our original ask amount, and if you'll recall, they authorized that reallocation of the hundred and fifty thousand that we were showing as an expenditure just to give back to them. Didn't make much sense fiscally to any of us why we were doing that, so that's why that transfer was reduced by that much. And then forty-nine thousand for the SRO, originally, you all wanted that to go directly to the sheriff's office anyway, and had it come out of their budget, supervisors did agree and understand that a little bit better, so our ask was reduced by that forty-nine thousand as well, so that, it seems like a lot of money to reduce the transfer, but we're still fully funded, because everything else that we asked for in capital improvement and for our raises and everything was funded, and you'll see that in that, that first page of the revenue summary, the total county transfer there is one sixty-eight, two fourteen. Our total budget, why, I mean, nineteen thousand more, when you consider all of the money that we've lost from federal and state and then the transfer, but that's your revenue summary on that first page. So the extra funds that we're receiving are going to support the salary increases and then do a lot of capital improvement. Is there any questions about the FY nineteen budgets, I wanna give you one other update on the end of year processes? Is that okay? I don't understand. So, end of year has always been kind of a crazy time for fiscal management, and if you do some research with other school divisions and things, it's not quite necessary to do it the way we've been doing it, especially when the auditors take all of our expenditures from, you know, June and July and accrue it back to your FY eighteen dollars, it just made no sense to any of us why we continue to try to come up with some arbitrary number that cuts off at June thirty, and that's what a reappropriation is, when auditors are going to accrue it back in your FY eighteen anyway. We should do that upfront, save a lot of that process, and, so Stacy and I, and Mr. Curry and Debbie Nick met about that, because they were kind of considering the same thing, why are we doing all this kind of extra when you don't need to, we can keep two books open and use your FY eighteen expenditures through the summer and close it at the end of August, so all your stuff is done, accrued in the appropriate procurement processes on your FY eighteen dollars, and it just saves that whole process, so you don't have to kind of willy-nilly try to spend down what you're doing and come up with that number, to then just reappropriate for something else. It's just much cleaner, it allows us to be better stewards of our taxpayer dollars, and it allows the process to do what it's meant to do, and, for instance, if we order buses, it's still an FY eighteen encumbrance, but what if they didn't come because they weren't processed right, and they don't come till July, so now I have to cancel June thirty, ask for the money back, and hope they give it to us, and there's no reason to do that. The board supervisors agree, so they're not going to hold us to that.
We were living thirty years ago.
Yeah.
We truly were, for a long time.
So, we're coming up to, I guess, the eighties, we're moving, we'll get there, no, we'll get closer. Yes, we have computers.
That's what I didn't tell them.
You did need to tell them, but, yeah, so we're coming up to the current century, but this is going to make it a lot clearer, there's not going to be a mad rush of trying to figure out what we, we already know what we need, and we put it out there, right now, we have a lot of our urgent capital needs being completed, because they allowed us that reallocation of funding now, so we knew it was available, so we moved forward with all of that. So the schedule's coming up, I asked Mike to talk about the activities bus, that's something we didn't talk about before, and end of year monies, I don't really feel too comfortable throwing out anything that's kind of pulled out of what we didn't talk about publicly, and that's something that, if you did wanna move that route and we had end of year left after we do what we said we were gonna do, then I would ask for reappropriation for the purpose, for that purpose, if that's something.
And that would happen when?
It could happen in August.
Yes, August.
August.
Stirring around at the end of.
Yes, no need to do that.
Well, and doing it the way we did do it, there are probably some things we spent more money on than we should have, or we bought things simply because we had that money left in there, the wage system used to do it a long time ago.
Much more transparent.
That's a great change, more transparent, it's a better stewardship.
Absolutely.
That's a great benefit.
Maybe right now.
We were just bragging about you.
Sure. So that completes my updates, and I'll be right back, that's enough.
That completes your update?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Well, let's move on, reports of the school board, report of headwaters.
I did not get to attend the last headwaters meeting, but I heard from the board that they were talking, they're talking about the, their, what is it, a new comprehensive plan.
Strategic.
Yeah, strategic plan, that's not comprehensive, I was like, it's not comprehensive, it's strategic, but, coming up, and they're also gonna be having an honor roll field trip coming up for kids, over a hundred kids are signed up to do it, so that's.
And parents.
And parents, and families.
It's gonna be fun, that's a lot of hats.
Yep, we're gonna recess for five minutes, and we'll resume.
Thank you.
Right, we're recessing. Good chance to go back.
Deputy clerk.
I'm taking it.
So, I think I interrupted you, Rachel.
Oh, that was, that was.
Headwaters.
Yeah, the headwaters, the two things were the, were the new strategic plan, and also the honor roll district, so it was, and the course, what's going on?
Course?
The summer course starts Monday.
Monday, so that one starts?
Starting Monday, right now, we're up to fifteen kids, maybe two or three more, a little bit more than we had last year, just emailing the director, getting near that time, let's know what else we need.
That starts when, next Monday?
Next Monday.
That's exciting.
Will be at the elementary school?
At the elementary school, five of us will be at the computer house in Cassidy.
Oh, wow.
Oh, really? Oh, good for you.
I'm just glad that it's during nature time.
And how soon is that, is that something?
On the twenty minute, twenty eighth of June.
So before we meet again?
Before we meet again.
The twenty ninth of June?
June twenty ninth, the other time?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Real reason I can't leave.
That one, they're working like that one. That's good for me, that's a Friday, right?
It's a Friday.
Thanks.
How come it's on here already? Hope that keeps it.
Yeah, yeah, she's ahead of you. Okay, MBGS.
Yeah, we did meet, we heard a, a presentation from a student, I have no idea what you're talking about, except it had to do with.
What?
With chestnut trees, American chestnut, Chinese chestnut, a whole study on, one tenth of one percent of Chinese chestnut saves the American chestnut, one tenth of one percent of made grass, will, will take care of the blight.
Wow.
It's amazing, but she's, she is without a doubt a really expert in this field, for sure. Anyways, we heard that one, and then we also had a great discussion on ways that systems can increase the diversity of governor's school. How do we find kids, diverse populations of kids that qualify for governor's school, and how do we get them ready for that? Because governor's school right now is, to be quite honest, I guess, is just as white as it can be with a few Asian kids, say, say, numbers are.
Demographically.
Huh?
Demographically.
Demographically, and we talked about socioeconomic diversity as well as ethnic diversity, so it's one of the things that all the systems are gonna look at, think about, try to increase that.
My audience, huh? Is it based on performance or grades?
There's a rigorous process for application, but we had a great discussion in our system about doing early identification for giftedness and nurturing those needs early, as early as possible, and in gifted, we've done quite a bit of work on that going non-verbal route, so we're not, you know, expecting that academic efficiency at such an early level for a strict criteria for identification, so looking at non-verbal ways and assessments that we're using, and we do use several of those now, and check sheets for teachers, and we use actual performance modeling, and different things to pick up those higher in thinking skills early on that don't require the, the more aptitude and expectation of having academic vocabulary acquisition, and that's kind of a difference that we.
Yeah, to help those kids that don't have four hundred books in their house, and your parents read to them every two hours.
Right.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not like you pay to play, it's based on performance and directing, so it's, I mean, it's, it's an even field if you're on intellectually that level.
Same idea is that, sort of grooming some students.
Can we provide more, more benefits or more assistance to younger kids if we can, but it's not like we're excluding anybody for any other reason, you may or may not, that's the way it should be.
Yeah, that's the way it should be.
It's just a staggering statistic, when you look at it demographically, the kids that are always the ones going that extra mile, we've had discussions with some of our students, who won't even do it, they're like, oh, well, there's dual enrollment, and then there's this, and my parents don't wanna pay for that, I'm not even doing it, you know, so that's a red flag too, what supports are there for?
We're looking for double enrollment even though. They're looking for the dual enrollment.
Exactly. They'll say it later, but that's kind of the mentality sometimes. So, finding ways to promote academic success without realizing that, you know, yes, there are barriers that your environment, family, like your socioeconomic status are going to present, but there's ways around those barriers, and we, it's our job to help fix those.
If it's out of potential, any and every.
Absolutely.
That's what we talked about.
It was a great meeting. It was one of the best.
It was a good discussion.
Yes, one that we really needed to have.
Thanks. The next item, 6.1, has to do with the Williamsburg, uh, annual event for school board. And we again need a delegate and alternate delegate, uh, to be appointed from this board for that thing. You volunteer again?
Sure.
And you've had a willing, offered a.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Great, all right.
That's good with me. I think it comes in then.
Well, it's right for us, given.
Oh.
I mean, it's a good time for me because Kathy's getting ready for 36 people.
Yeah. Oh, you can.
So, you can leave?
Yeah. Wait, it's in November.
And you get to see November, and we're only going to, I mean, typically, we did the one-day thing, and so going down in the morning and come back in the evening.
Right.
Plan to do again?
Yes.
Yeah?
Send those names in.
That's a table setting day.
All right. Great, thanks. So, we have, uh, Mr. Grove, James Meyer, who's our married secondary. All right, thanks. Moving on to public comment. Anybody want to share anything this evening? Did we already steal all your thunder, Kevin, or you wanted to come just a little bit more? Great, thanks for stepping up, Kev.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Brandon from Headwaters. I cannot let the evening go by without, unfortunately, Mr. Payne has left already, but I do want to thank both him and Mr. Tupper for, uh, all the help they've given us for the, um, field trip that we've been putting together. It's a lot to ask for people to drive into DC with a school bus or whatever, and they're definitely accommodating and wonderful about what they need, and not just saying, "Yeah, sure, we do," but telling us exactly what they need, some of the concerns, so that we can try to address them in the time there. And they've just been absolutely wonderful about it, so thank you very much. Please, uh, pass them on out. We would be very thankful about that. Again, the summer course concert is coming up June 29, uh, over at Cassidy's Theater House. Please call us or email us and let us know. The one disadvantage we do have about not having it in the gym is that there is always so many seats available. We don't think we're going to hit them all, but please let us know so we can make sure we have seats. It's just an opportunity for the kids to be able to perform on a stage that's a little bit better sized for the, the environment. It kind of gives it the feel of being in a different, a different venue, which I think is, is really been very important for the, part of the, the whole educational process. Finally, um, strategic planning, as I said, is coming up, uh, it's coming up until March 27. We'll be reaching out to many human community, probably some of you as well, uh, to get your, um, your feedback, your input into, um, what Headwaters can be doing to try to be part of this whole community. A lot of exciting things are happening right now. It's, I've only been here for around three years now, and I just see a great change from the time since I first came here. So, it's a really exciting time. Some of the issues that we, that we did talk about in the, um, in the last, uh, board meeting that we had, where some of the concern we're having is scholarships. Some of their, some of the rules have changed with how people are able to give scholarships and whatever. So, some of the things that we're going to have to be looking at as well. A lot of the game has changed, um, in terms of scholarships. Dr. Grimsill's will say the same thing for, uh, what's required of graduates when they come out. The game has changed, and we need to be, uh, the schools and Headwaters, we hope that we need to be a part of, of, um, making that change possible. But I still feel like we are in one of the grand school districts in the state, one of the best I've been in, with a nice, small community with a lot of great people who want to be, uh, part of educating the children. So, thank you very much. I thank you for all that you do, and thank you for your support.
Kevin, that choir event is going to be a lasting memory for us. Can that pour them? They will always be thinking about that. I mean, it's a milestone event.
I hope it will not be the last time they get a chance to perform today.
Anybody else?
I want to repeat this.
Repeat the story about the typewriter story.
Everybody heard, because I, it was just, it just, I can't tell you how it took me back, because it really, you know, you think you're, anyway, I turned 60 this year, so I, I just have to say that it really sent me back to me. I had, she had said, "What did you borrow?" I said, "Well, we had computers." So, from the manual typewriter to the IBM selector, to her generation.
And you did what to type? You had to move them?
But then, the, the whole discussion about, you know, obviously, your comments about.
Come over to my house. I'll show you the one. I still have it.
But we do have a great school system. That, that conversation led to the fact that I, I was there, and I said, you know, I can remember when I first came back home, Dr. Gangland started that process with, uh, the, the Mac lab here at the high school. And then it grew out from there, you know. You all know the small screen, and all of a sudden, people can see what we have now. We're just, we're the world. Because of prior boards and leadership that look forward, I think we're a whole lot better off than, anyway, I'm up here preaching.
Hey, you know what? We just have to wait, because the, the same thing that she's laughing about right now, when she's 60.
Yeah, that's right, exactly.
You mean, you had to, you had to click, you had to click on something, you had to touch the keys?
What's a keyboard?
Well, I, I think, I'm.
It's common.
Yeah, well, the voice recognition, they've got them, and I think I, I just got to patent something, because if you're in an office and you can find something to cover the face and nobody else hears you talking.
We can hear you, mine.
Yeah, that's it.
I'm going to assume that doesn't fucking count. Can't follow, can't follow that. All right, so moving on to action items. Is there a motion to approve the VSPA policy updates? Motion, Mr. Uben, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Grove. Is there any comments, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no. Disorder. Is there a motion to approve the federal program applications as presented this evening? Motion is by him. Second, Mr. Grove. Any discussion? Thank you for all. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no. Disorder. A motion to approve the VSPA delegate and alternate?
Certainly.
Mr. Uben has the motion. Is there a second? Second is by him. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, no. You're stuck with it. Approval of the budget changes, which are the nuances that were in the document, right? They're now in our final copy tonight. Is, is there a motion to accept the final budget?
Oh, boo.
Motion, Mr. Grove. Was that Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Yes. Motion, Mr. Grove, second from Mr. Uben. Any comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no. Disorder. Any new business? I would just say, uh, Dr. Grimsley, can we make sure in July that we discuss the transportation options to address what we brought to us tonight?
Absolutely.
Anything else? Our next regularly scheduled school meeting is the 10th of July. We are not having an end-of-year payout meeting.
We are not.
We are not.
How about that?
Amazing. And I would not be at the next.
July 10?
Meeting, so I'm going to go, I'm going on a trip with Ben Temple, the stem in the tusky bay. We have a port is around the sinking island in the tusky bay. It won't exist. But it's, it's a, it's a stem in the tusky bay. We've been doing it through soil and water conservation service, and Stephanie DiNapola is leading it, and it's, and Mr. Tupper and everybody's come along.
Wow, great. That's going to be a great.
I used to work there. I used to work those, basically, that trip, exactly. So, before I started the farm, so I'm excited.
For them to have you come too.
Yeah, I'm excited. I'm hoping to talk to you, look at part more of that.
So, you could debrief that on, in August. That'd be great.
That'd be great.
I will bring back some.
Should we put that on the agenda?
Yeah. And also, another, uh, members of the RAP school board is going to come, Heather Wick. Yes.
You don't have to do a PowerPoint and stuff. We just want to hear about it. No pressure. No pressure.
Yeah, I probably won't. Yeah, I'm really excited. I was so honored to be asked.
All right, we're going to be moving into closed session now. There is a short, um, list that I can see of vacancies that, uh, would look like a fairly short list. Coaches.
Right, yeah, your basic, beginning of the year.
High school principal, little things.
Little things, like.
Yes. And, uh, and so how long are we going to be in closed session? Would you estimate?
Oh, yeah, for you guys.
Yeah?
We, what, 10 minutes?
10 minutes? Estimate, we'll estimate 10 minutes in closed session, at which time we will come out and certify and give a personnel report and make a motion, uh, regarding anything that happened in closed session related to personnel. Right?
How about if I move that we go into closed session?
How about you do it?
It'd be all right?
Do it.
I move the board convening in closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for administrative, coaching, professional positions, resignations of professional and classified positions, and retirement of professional positions pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
Yeah, a motion from Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Uben. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no. We are now going to be in closed session. We'll recess, obviously. All right, we need to certify that all things related to, uh, personnel are discussed during closed session. Mr. Uben, you want to start us?
Appreciate the certification. Derek Grove certified.
Rachel Bynum certified.
Weston Mill certified.
Suzanne Myers.
During closed session, we, um, received a list of new coaches. Why did I close? I didn't close. Five resignations, a retirement, uh, some new teachers. I can name them, but they're all, uh, new people. A series of coaches for next year, and, uh, and, uh, our new high school principal, which we're about to vote on this slate. So, Jimmy Swindler, the new principal at the high school. Uh, is there a motion? Do we have a motion?
Disorder.
We have a motion from, uh, Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, Mr. Meyer. All in favor of, uh, this slate of personnel? Let them know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Disorder. All we have left is a motion adjourned. Congratulations, Jimmy.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Motion, Mr. Uben. Is there a second?
I second.
Second is by him. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Goodbye.
Goodbye. Please adjourn.